Okay. Welcome, everybody, to our Planning Board meeting, Tuesday, May the 7th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Do I have any declarations of conflicts today? Seeing none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Moved by Bob, seconded by Paul, all those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Now, can I have an adoption of the minutes from our Tuesday, April 2nd meeting? Moved by Jackie, seconded by Chris, and all those in favor? Okay, we're all in favor. The adoption of the minutes, okay. Any business arising from those minutes? Your worship? Oh, okay. All right, so we can move right on to our reports. And our first one is 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401, and 27 McMillan Crescent, PID 778241. And we have Brandon here today to present. And I also will mention that we do have folks here today from the residents. And they are, the mic will be open to anyone that does want to come up and make comment or see clarification. So, thank you, and over to you, Brandon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, what we're looking at here is a major variance request regarding lot frontage at two properties. This entails a subdivision and lot consolidation. So, it's at 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401. And I would like to point out, because we got a lot of letters on this and comments, that 14 Oak Drive does not exist as of right now. That parcel has no address, as it is a vacant lot. We gave it the name of 14 Oak Drive, as that's what it would have originally been called. If this gets approved, it will take a name on McMillan Crescent, as that's where the driveway access is. 27 McMillan Crescent is the other property in question, and its PID is 778241. So, 14 Oak Drive is this large parcel right here. It is mostly landlocked. It has road access on Mount Edward Road and Oak Drive, both of which are about 10 to 20 feet wide. And then 27 McMillan Crescent is the adjacent property. It has road access right here onto the corner of McMillan Crescent. It contains a single detached dwelling and accessory buildings on a flag-shaped lot. Looking around in the nearby neighborhood, we can see that Oak Drive is located in the R2S zone, which is the low-density residential zone, with McMillan Crescent being in the R1L zone, which is a single-detached residential zone. And the way the zoning development bylaw works is, in this case, they want to build a single-detached dwelling right here, so it then steps down into the R1L zone. So, the R1L zone would apply to both of these in this scenario. So, surrounding zones around it include the institutional and open space zones. Institutionals in the blue, open spaces in the green. Everything else is residential. Most of the dwellings nearby are single-detached and semi-detached, two-unit dwellings. And up here, there are some townhouses, which is slightly cut off. But for the most part, it is all one- and two-unit dwellings. So, the request here is to reduce required minimum lot frontage from approximately 18 meters or 59.1 feet to approximately 10.06 meters, 33 feet, to allow a subdivision and subsequent consolidation of the two existing properties for a single-detached dwelling to be constructed on the new lot. So, to break down this request, the first part of this is a subdivision of Lot 24-1 from the remnant parcel. So, this giant parcel, which we called Oak Drive, is then being cut down into this, 24-1. The next part is from Lot 24-2. It's not very high resolution, but this yellow strip here is called R2, or right-of-way 2. Or, sorry, the part above it is R2, which is currently connected to Lot 24-2, but is being cut off and then appended to Lot 24-1 and consolidated to create this whole structure. And this is what's left over of 24-2. So, it is a subdivision and subsequent consolidation to create two laneways, which will share the same driveway through a right-of-way. So, as you can see here on Street View, this is the current driveway for 27 McMillan Crescent, which would be shared by both 27 McMillan and the new lot, and as well, it is shared, it will be shared between three different properties. The road access on McMillan Crescent is noted to be, the road access on McMillan Crescent is much less busier than Oak Drive, as it is a local street compared to the Collector Road along Oak Drive. McMillan Crescent does not see as much traffic, therefore, it is safer to enter and exit. And I'd also like to point out that the applicant stated they would be open to a future street from McMillan Crescent. So, if the city or anyone ever chose to, this could be used as a future street to then, say, subdivide these two and make two other properties. As of right now, I don't think there's any plans for that. So, applying the official plan to this request, there's two major objectives that stand out. So, the first is from Section 3.2-1. Our objective is to contain urban sprawl by introducing a staging strategy for new development and to ensure that there is concurrency between proposals for new development and the provision of underground municipal services. Along with that, our policy shall be to direct urban growth to land that is logical extension of an existing urban area or neighborhood and will be serviced by municipal water and wastewater systems, which this lot would be. The next section, Section 2, or Section 3.2-2. Our objective is to promote compact urban form and infill development, as well as the efficient use of infrastructure and public service facilities. And our policy shall be to encourage infill development through public land assembly initiatives, flexible zoning provisions, and the reduction of waiver or development fees for small or irregular-shaped lots and, when warranted, the use of tax incentives with fully serviced lots in the city. And the next point, our policy shall be to use existing underground services to their fullest capacity before public funds are used to extend new water and wastewater lines into areas that are essentially undeveloped. This is an undeveloped land, but it has existing services that can be used. Regarding public feedback, we received 21 letters from property owners within 100 meters of the subject properties. Fifteen of these letters were in support of the proposal. Five of the letters were in opposition of the proposal, and one letter did not state supporting, either supporting or opposing, the proposal. To summarize these, the reasons for support that were noted by the nearby residents included increasing the housing stock and addressing the housing crisis, proposed dwelling fits the surrounding neighborhood. I'd also like to note, again, back to the zoning. If the applicant wanted to, they could put a two-unit dwelling on the lot. They chose to go with one, which is a much less intensive use of the lot and better reflects the neighborhood. As I mentioned previously, safer road access to McMillan Crescent as opposed to Oak Drive. And there was a comment about the removal of dead trees on the new lot, which was due to the Hurricane Fiona. It's a pretty heavily wooded lot. It got hit pretty hard. Moving on to the reasons of objection. There was a lot of uncertainty and question about the address that would be assigned to the new property. As I said before, it will have, it will be addressed to McMillan Crescent. I don't know the exact number they'll get. We work with the province and can oppose to work out that addressing. But the main thing is the driveway, the only driveway that is being requested is to McMillan Crescent. Along with that, potential road access to Oak Drive, utility services along Oak Drive. There's a water main along that strip of land that accesses Oak Drive. If you put a driveway over there, it could be problematic. And lastly, lot drainage. So, our analysis regarding positives, it utilizes existing undeveloped land in a serviced area of the city to create new infill development. The single-detached dwelling is the least intensive use possible in the R2 zone, and it utilizes an existing driveway to a local street rather than a Collector Road. Looking at shortcomings, there could be privacy concerns for the abutting properties due to a dwelling in their rear yard, and the proposed lot frontage does not meet our minimum bylaw requirement. So, in conclusion, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend a council that the following major variance requests for the subject properties located at 14 Oak Drive, PID 390401, and 27 McMillan Crescent, PID 778241 be approved, that being to reduce the required minimum lot frontage from approximately 18 meters, 59.1 feet, to 10.06 meters, 33.0 feet, to allow a subdivision and consolidation of two existing properties for a single-detached dwelling to be constructed on the new lot. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I can open it up to the board members first. Does anybody have any question for Brandon or for our manager or myself?
Could I just ask?
Yes, go ahead, Your Worship.
Question or clarification? So, the last time this came to the Planning Board, it was, what date, David? Was it, I was looking, the April 2nd meeting, wasn't it April 2nd?
I think it was March 13th.
March 13th?
Yeah.
So, at that time, it was to come off Oak Drive?
Yes.
Right? Now, Judge, I just wanted, so your recommendation at that time was also approved? That was a vote of confidence or your, so, no, no. The recommendation from the Planning Board was to go with the proposed 14 Oak Drive?
Correct.
And the discussions that took place at the March meeting was to redirect it up to off McMillan? Am I correct there?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's being proposed here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. So, so if everyone, if they're trying to remember the history of this, the Planning Board did recommend the last application, but council did not. So, the applicant is back today, hearing the concerns of residents and council, and they're back with a proposal to actually locate the driveway on McMillan, from my understanding. So, if anyone else has any questions before I open it up to the folks here in the neighborhood? Yep, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, I was a little confused. On page 2, the bottom paragraph, it says, "If approved, the lot at 14 Oak Drive would share the existing driveway to 27 McMillan Crescent as its main road access." What did that mean, "main road access"? Because that means there's not a secondary one.
Do you want me or David to answer that? You address David, just so.
Oh, sorry.
Me? Okay, perfect. Yeah, so, when we approve any new dwellings in the city, like apartment, single-detached dwelling, anything, they have to go through a process to have their driveway approved by Public Works. For any single-detached dwelling, that is one driveway. They only approve one. I guess the wording in here didn't exactly state that there would only be one. But in this scenario, there was only one driveway to McMillan Crescent, and we call it a road access in the bylaw as opposed to a driveway.
Yep.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, so there is no change, there will be no change to that particular road. It'll just be, access will be granted under the way it currently exists, because it looks a little different when it's all shaded yellow. It looks like, almost like a full street, but there's no change at all. It'll look exactly the same. It's just that access will be granted to allow to use that same road.
So, to my knowledge, the driveway will just be extended, access to go a bit further to reach the new lot. But I don't think it's going to be widened or anything. They'll just have a right-of-way on both sides.
Okay. And there will be no ability to access the property from Oak Drive from there? Am I understanding that correctly?
So, we would approve the one driveway from McMillan Crescent as the road access. We would not approve the Oak Drive one, so it could not be utilized as a driveway. We are, we can also put conditions on permits if we want to make things more explicit, if it gets to the approval point, where we can explicitly say, "Only one road access shall be used, and that shall be McMillan Crescent."
Okay. I think that should be, I think that should be there.
Yep.
I think that would be something that would be worthwhile, including, because the provision is there if we, because the other question, which got answered earlier, was that if, I know that the current owners, or my understanding is current owners have no desire to do anything with the land at this point, and that's totally within their jurisdiction to do with it as they see fit. But if at some point, at some point down the road, a street could be developed, and that property could be developed, if there was a change of heart at some point down the road? Am I correct?
Yes. In the subdivision plan they provided, they said on two right-of-ways, there's right-of-way 1 and right-of-way 2, that they both would allow access, or would allow the potential for a street to be built at some point over that driveway. And they, in conversations with the applicant, they mentioned that there's, the new building will be set back. So, if a road ever was put in there, it wouldn't run through the building. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great, and thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At what stage, the right-of-way becomes a public street, like you have to dedeck to the city? If there is no dwelling minutes, if it is further subdivided, at what stage? Like, is it like subdivided into, you know, another two or three more lots there? Or, when does it actually change, you know, to a street?
That's a good question. Through the chair, Sen, it's a good question. So, it would have to be constructed to municipal standards. So, there'd have to be drawn, submitted to the city, approved by Public Works, built to that standard. And then the city is willing to accept that as a public road if that were to ever come to pass. We don't, we're not aware that that's an intention at the current point in time. But, I mean, if it did, there'd be a process that would have to be put through for the city to take custody of that additional piece of land. And we would be having to be willing to take custody of it as well, so.
Right, thanks, David. But the question is, like, now, it's two lots, like, the lot is getting subdivided. Like, is it like three lots, five lots? When, is there anything in the bylaw or policy that states that after five lots of division, you have to have dedeck the right-of-way to, for public road?
Through the, are you aware, okay. Through the chair, I'm not aware of a rule that states that, that there'd be really no limits so long as, you know, we're approving of that, and Public Works doesn't have an issue either, so.
Okay, so even if they further subdivide the property, or the adjacent property is, you know, subdivided, there is still no rule enforcing, you know, suggesting that they would have to dedeck the right-of-way to the city for a public road?
Through the chair, that's correct, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, okay, thanks, David.
Thank you for that. And just a question for Brandon and David, or whoever chooses to answer it. So, it's my understanding that the Oak Drive right-of-way is currently a right-of-way. So, that will stay as just a right to pass through. So, therefore, it can't be, at this, at this stage, that's not up for discussion for creating any type of road there. We've already kind of gone through that. So, that will remain as a right-of-way?
Yes. Jason, would you mind just putting the presentation back up? It might be easier to show it that way. Thank you. So, yeah. This, there'd be no intention to put a driveway here. All the road access is coming from here. It just makes more sense if you were to put the lot here to keep this a part of the lot, because basically you would just, you would just be left with a sliver of land if you were to not include that. But, yeah, there is no intention that has been stated, or that we would allow as of right now with this proposal, to have a road access right here.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. Any other questions for now from the board?
Madam Chair, just to clarify what I asked at the start. So, the March meeting, we went from Oak Drive to what's being proposed. I think you've adopted everything that was stated at that meeting, Brandon?
Yeah, we worked with the applicant to, we went through the minutes and what all the counselors and planning board members said, and they redid their approach with a, they have a new proposal this time, which took into consideration a lot of the comments.
Yeah. And that's the reason for your recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I think I'll open it up now to any of, either the developer, or the applicant, or the residents, if anyone wants to come up. There's a mic right over here. If they just want to state their name for the record and make sure the mic is on when they speak. So, yeah, whoever wants to go first, just go for it.
Hello, my name's Nicole Peters. I'm at 12 Oak Drive. I just want to say thank you to the Planning Department for clarifying that application, answering a lot of our questions, concerns. This was very much appreciated. And also to the applicants for putting forth a new application, hearing our concerns in doing so. And also to Planning Board and Council.
Thank you.
Joe Rolich, resident in Sherwood, and the applicant for the variance. I'd like to thank the Chair and the Planning Board for giving me the opportunity to present some details surrounding a proposed subdivision of this lot. I won't get into some of the stuff, because it's already, Brandon has eloquently expressed what we're thinking here. The one thing I will correct, though, is this parcel, 390401, that is owned by Velda Taylor, was surveyed in 2010. I have the survey plan here. It was approved by the city with access out onto Oak and to the Mount Edward Road. 25 feet on Mount Edward Road, 20 feet out onto Oak. But as we've talked about here, I just wanted to, I guess, it's been clarified that the 14 Oak was just used as a reference point, and that we would, the Planning Board, we definitely would be using McMillan Crescent as our access to that lot. So, thank you for that. The other thing, just additionally, if approval is granted for these variants here in this application, obviously, Brandon did a great job, thank you. The next steps would be taken to subdivide the lot. Once that's, that process is complete, then we would be, a building permit would be sought. And subsequently, a drainage plan by a professional engineer will be sought out and will be implemented. The other thing I'd like to mention as well is, the home will face away from Oak Drive. So, it will be backyard to backyard, and we will obviously follow the setbacks that are laid out in the bylaw. And that, of course, is similar to the properties around that area. And I, as, just in conclusion, I believe that the application for a major variance request is reasonable and would be a good addition to the community. And I thank you for your time and attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Joe. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay.
Just one question.
Yeah.
I was trying to read this on my package, but I, what does the blue, what does the blue area mean, Brandon? We got the yellow where, which is the, basically, the proposed right-of-way or road or access, whatever we call. What does, what's that blue that goes north and south?
Yeah, so that blue line, it didn't translate very well, it's the presentation, but it's the utility easement. So, there's like the water line that runs through there.
Oh, okay.
Which was the, I'm like, we talked about it the first time, which was a concern.
Oh, you can see it there in the broke, now that you mention it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, you can read it through the broken English. Okay.
Yes, but, yeah, that's the utility easement.
All right. I just couldn't read it on the package. Thank you.
No, it's, no problem.
Great. Oh, go ahead, yes, come on up.
All right. My name is Garnet Taylor, and I live at 27 McMillan Crescent. I just wanted to speak about the idea of the access onto Oak. And it was never, it's not our intent to do anything underhanded, or to say that we're going to apply for an access on McMillan and then flip and go to Oak. But Oak Drive is a viable access. It is required by the city for the water easement that's under there. And the intent of the applicant is also to just grasp that out and shape it in such a way that it would limit any water going on to 12 Oak Drive. But I think it's the idea of putting restrictions that it can't be used. The intent is not to drive it this, but it's, if you wanted to, you know, if there was ever an emergency, if any of the houses were on fire and you had to get access in there and there was something there, you'd want to have this access still be viable for those type of purposes. But the intent is not to use this on any kind of regular basis, but just to have it grasped out and same as like part of the lot. But does that answer some of your concerns that you had earlier about it not being used on a regular basis or anything like that? But just, does that clarify any of that?
Madam Chair, just one thing that I did note when it was brought up by Counselor Beck is that we all remember last year, Hammond Plains, there was only one access point in.
That's right.
Everything burnt down.
Yeah.
This, you know, this, there's a lot of property in back here, and there's a lot of green space. So, I agree, like, I don't like to put restrictions on property, because it's the big hand of government, which I don't mind doing sometimes. But in this case, we've already seen an example. And luckily, you know, only houses burnt down, but luckily, no lives were lost in Hammond Plains. So, when, and as you know, I think Brandon and David So when, and as you know, I, I think Brandon and David, any of the multi-unit apartment complexes that are going up now, we need that secondary access because of Hammond Plains. We always wait for a disaster to happen. So I, I agree with, with you, Mr. Taylor, that I, I'd be reluctant to support something that would cut off a secondary access.
Thank you for that, Your Worship. And just to clarify, I think the intent is that we, I think we all agree that it is, it's an easement and that water and sewer need to get in there and with their water. So it's, it's never going to be closed off, but I, I think the concern or, or more so the discussion was around just ensuring that, yes, there are emergency situations where this must be used for safety. And I think it was more so just the clarity that, you know, emergencies didn't turn into just an everyday access point. So however that is written, that doesn't alleviate emergencies, as His Worship said, I think is more the direction from my understanding from the board. Anyone can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong there?
Yeah, I think we were just, um, we didn't want to have it in writing that there was no access permitted at that point because, um, the intent is that all the neighbors get along in this area. There was thoughts that we didn't get along, but we do. I, I've known Nicole my, her whole life and, um, her mom was good friends with our family her whole life. Actually, um, Mary's, um, grandmother, I called her my grandmother as well. I visit her all the time. But anyway, we, we just don't want to have restrictions on that access. We're not going to use it, um, but i- if it need be, it can be used and a vehicle can be driven out there if it needed to be, that type of thing.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. And I think the direction or the, where the board was going with that is, um, you might not always be there and so it might not always be you folks that all get along. So it was more so for future, for, for the future of that, of that easement there is, is where the direction from Counselor Beck, if I heard it correctly, is, you know, if there's a way to put that in that doesn't, that doesn't, that, that appeases everybody. So it, it limits the access in the sense that it's there for emergency, it's there for, you know, it's, it's always going to be an open space, but that it doesn't become, um, the, the new access point is, and I don't know, Brandon, if you can help with the language on that so that you can find that, that healthy boundary and that, and that balance to appease everybody.
Yeah, um, so yeah, with any easement, you're not allowed to build, um, on them to begin with. Um, and then we, if you don't want to put trees on them, so be it. As if it's a grassed area that can be driven upon, I think that would solve most things. And we'll put on the permanent ways that McMillan Crescent is the main road access, not the only road access. Yeah, and we can work with Public Works and Utilities on that as well. Um, and Fire, we, we'll send them a notification just to see if it's good with them, um, the proposal, but we can address that, uh, if this gets approved as a variance.
But Madam Chair, I think that was addressed in the first time, the first round, because I think the applicant went to Public Works, water and wastewater. I don't know if they went to police, but they all cleared it, did they not? Did they not clear it as an access on 14? What?
Yes. It's with the Oak Drive entrance where it's cleared.
Yeah.
So now they have a new entrance and they'll clear it. And I'm sure as Counselor Deputy Mayor said, the wording simple is that, you know, the property owner has agreed that this isn't going to be used as a regular entrance point for in and out access and it's written into some sort of a development thing that carries on.
Yeah, uh, to expand on that, yeah. Any driveway in the city for any new building or any new driveway goes through Public Works and Utilities. Um, so they approve it. We don't have anything to do with driveways. So yeah, the first one, it was approved by both of them. Um, this one, uh, where it's coming from, McMillan Crescent on an existing driveway, we wouldn't have to get their approval, um, but we'll definitely send along the plans to them so they're aware of what's going on.
Okay, thank you for that. If we don't have any more questions, we do have a recommendation from our Planning and Heritage Department that encourages Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following major variance for the subject property located at 14 Oak Drive and 27 McMillan Crescent be approved. So do I have somebody that would like to, okay, moved by Counselor Beck and seconded by Jackie. So, um, we have now this, uh, resolution on the floor. Does anybody have any questions on this resolution?
Question.
Question?
Question's called.
Question called. All those in favor of moving this on to Council? Okay, anybody opposed? Okay, that's, yes, Counselor McCabe was absent. Thank you, Counselor Beck, for always being my second in command here as committee chair. Yeah, but yes, to, to note, Counselor McCabe is out of the building for a minute, so, so all those are in favor with the exception of Counselor McCabe. So thank you for that, everybody. It's okay. All right. Moving on to our, um, our next application. It is, um, this is a rezoning, um, site-specific application, 145 Richmond Street, PID 340422. And this is Brandon, again.
No, it's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. So yeah, right here, we're looking at a site-specific exemption. Uh, the exemption here is for prohibited signage. It is located at 145 Richmond Street, PID 340422. So some, oh, this is the request, my bad. Uh, the request here is to proceed to public consultation for a site-specific exemption to, uh, first off, allow signs that project a business name, image, or advertisement onto a building or any other surface from a source external to the sign and allow animated and video signs. As per section 47.3.1i and L of the zoning development bylaw, these types of signage are prohibited within the city. So 145 Richmond Street is located between Richmond and Grafton and Queen Street. Um, it is located in the Park Cultural Zone and surrounded by a variety of commercial institution, institutional and residential uses. So these include offices, eating and drinking establishments, other cultural businesses and institutions. 145 Richmond Street is most commonly known as Confederation Center of the Arts. Um, it is a national historic site as by the federal government. It was constructed in 1964 utilizing brutalist architectural style and several permits have been issued by our department for renovations and signage. I think all these renovations have been internal aside from the exterior elevator that was for accessibility concerns. Looking at the official plan for this, um, the official plan explicitly states to support the Confederation Center and their mandate. So at section 5.3, number 2, our objective is to continue to support and work with the Confederation Center on those initiatives which will further strengthen the institution and its important role in the city. Our policy shall be to support the Confederation Center's mandate to collect, interpret, and promote Canis culture and heritage. Our policy shall be to support any efforts by the Confederation Center to broaden its mandate or to extend its summer season. And our policy shall be to work with the Confederation Center on projects which will contribute to the vitality and efficiency of our downtown. So the two signs in question here are, I'll start with the projection. So we do not allow signs that project a business name, image, or advertisement or, onto a building or any other surface from a, an external source. Um, you may have seen this in the past and usually around December, they get permission from our Tourism Culture Department to project different signage, um, during the month of, during the month of December during, um, special city events. They're looking to do this, uh, full-time now. The second prohibited sign is animated video signs. So these are existing right now. They've been there for a little while. They only ever show text or, um, images. What they want to do is be able to show videos and other animations on them, which the signs have the power to do, but due to our bylaw, they've never been permitted to do so. So those are the two requests here. And these are, so these are existing. This is just kind of an idea of what it might look like. It would not be this hectic. Um, this is just kind of an idea of the things they could do. We would not have a million signs on it at once, just for context. So in general, the Planning and Heritage Department encourages Planning Board to recommend to Council that the following site-specific exemption for the subject property located at 145 Richmond Street, PID 340422, proceed to public consultation. And this is to allow signs that project a business name, image, or advertisement onto a building or any other surface from a source external to the sign and to allow animated and video signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Any questions now? Remember, we're just, um, this is just to approve for public consultation. Go ahead, Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brandon, um, is this sort of an application that comes every year or every, you know, winter and summer season or is this like for asking for a permanent change, like allow them to have, you know, the signage and those animation, video, like moving forward? Like they don't need to come back to the city?
Yeah, um, this is the first time they've applied for this. Um, and yeah, it's a site-specific exemption. They don't have, there's no duration on how long these last. They're tied to the property as well, not the building. So if approved, they would be allowed to do this, um, forever, essentially.
Thanks, Brandon. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you for that. Any other questions? So the Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging, um, the board to recommend to Council that we move this along to a public consultation. So do I have somebody to?
Um, move by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Chris.
All those in favor of moving this on to public consultation? Great, unanimously support it. Thank you very much for that. All right, we can move on to our third item on the agenda, which is a, um... Before I do that, is this, this is your last report tonight, Brandon? So is this your last report with us forever? Did I, my understanding that this is your, this is last time for you? You will be thoroughly missed.
Yeah, it is my last planning board meeting.
Okay, well, thank you for your service. Thank you for that. So we're moving on to PID 358218, Sen, access for 46 Valley Street. And our manager of development planning, David Andrum, is here to present this application. So thank you, David.
Okay, uh, thank you, Chair Yankoff. Uh, so the following application is a site-specific exemption request to zoning that concerns an unaddressed parcel identified as PID number 358218. Uh, this is a request to proceed to public consultation for the proposed site-specific zoning exemption. And this is, uh, this exemption request is to permit a community fridge as an accessory use within the parking zone P for the unaddressed property identified as PID number 358218. Uh, I'll note, as per section 43.1 of the zoning and development bylaw, only a parking lot and a parking structure are permitted uses within the parking zone P. Uh, the next slide illustrates the location of the subject property, which is at the southwest corner of Conley Street and Valley Street. I'll note that the, um, property, as, as mentioned, is within the parking zone P of the zoning and development bylaw, is adjacent to established residential uses in the area that are to the south and the west of the site. Uh, and there are commercial uses which are found to the north here, uh, containing a variety of retail and service commercial uses, uh, such as pharmacy and so forth. Um, this property, uh, contains a surface parking lot with parking for approximately 30 vehicles. Uh, it's noted that the property is owned by the Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club, uh, which operate a community hall on the property located across the street, uh, from the subject property at 46 Valley Street shown here. Uh, so common owners of this parcel and the parking lot as well. And this parking lot serves as an accessory use, uh, to the Lions Club Community Hall. Again, from, this is a zoning map to illustrate the, uh, zone, prevailing zoning in the area, which is predominantly residential in nature surrounding the site. R3 and R2 zone containing, uh, single and semi-detached dwellings. Uh, mixed-use commercial is predominantly on the block to the east across the street and C2 commercial zoning to the north where the, uh, pla- current plaza is located. And as noted, the current zoning only allows for a parking lot and a parking structure as permitted uses. Um, so at this point in time, uh, Planning and Heritage Department is encouraging the Planning Board to recommend to Council, uh, to proceed to public consultation concerning the following site-specific exemption request to the parking zone P for the subject property identified as PID 358218, which is to allow for a community fridge as an accessory use on the subject property, whereas a community fridge is not otherwise permitted. Uh, so that is a summary of the request and the application before you tonight, and I'll hand it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I'm looking at the map correctly. The fridge is already there, isn't it? So is this just a kind of a housekeeping process?
Yeah, through the chair, so just for background, this application, I'll just flip over to the map just for reference. Um, the community fridge is located on the aerial image at the northwest corner of the site approximately. It's been there since the last, about three years ago, it was established in 2021 by a local community group that had the permission of the Sherwood Lions Club. This application was brought forward in response to a complaint that the city received regarding the use. And in doing our research and looking back in time, the use was never established through any type of planning permission. So the current zoning that applies to the site doesn't allow that use to be there. It's technically illegal. And so this application has been put forward as an attempt to legalize the use from, uh, zoning bylaw perspective and to address that. Um, and thankfully, the community group has been more than amenable. They've worked, you know, hand and, they've worked, been very cooperative with the city in response to that complaint that was received. So this is why this is before you tonight and will be put through the public process for considerations.
Certainly, I appreciate that clarification. Any questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Your Worship and then, okay.
Go ahead.
Sen first and then His Worship.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Madam Chair. David, um, is the city looking, is Planning Department looking towards, you know, drafting a policy that can actually address this sort of issues in the future? Like, you know, we know that this was there illegally for three years and now they want to legalize it. But, you know, there is a momentum, you know, where people, community groups are coming and, you know, opening community fridges. And, you know, I'm just wondering if we can have a set of rules and guidelines and where and when we can have those community fridges. Is the Planning Department working in that direction?
Uh, through the chair, it's a very good question, Sen. Um, it really didn't pop up on our radar until this came about. That there, we're trying to consider this on a site-specific basis, kind of in a unique customized situation. But we do have an opportunity coming up with a new zoning bylaw to address this more writ large across the city. So there's an opportunity upcoming where we could consider a blanket policy for the city where uses like this may be permitted in certain zones, just as a blanket permission, perhaps. But we're not there yet, which is why we have to consider this on a site-specific basis today, because we don't otherwise have regulations that would permit something like this in, in this type of zone, for instance. And there are a lot of parking lots in the city that could potentially accommodate this type of use, but we have no current permissions to allow for them in those cases, so.
So, oh, do you have another? Um, you go ahead, follow up with your question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and, and then, thanks for your answer. I'm also wondering, like, what is the sanction if people have put things in place which is, you know, illegal in nature in this case? You know, is there any sanction that follows? Or any sort of, you know, fines and, you know, you know, is there anything in violation of our bylaw enforcement? I, I clearly see that if, you know, if something was put in place and this is nothing to do with this particular application, but in generally, if something is placed illegally without legal sanction, and then is the city, you know, vigilant of the enforcement here?
Through the chair, we, we operate, like our bylaw enforcement with respect to zoning operates on a response basis, on the basis of complaints. So if we receive a complaint, we investigate. We try to seek resolution first, which is what's happening here. So we put a stay on any enforcement and, and sanctions on, on the group or the owner or whoever it may be who's operating an illegal use. And we try to work it through a process to bring it into conformity. Um, if they're not cooperative or it's not possible to do that, then we escalate things to, um, issuing a notice. And there, there is a point at which we can levy fines, um, on property owners for, for maintaining an illegal use on a property, um, if, if they're being uncooperative in that, that sense, so.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, David. My question then would be, just to build on that, so, you know, you pull into some of the other larger parking lots and you see the, um, there's, um, drop-off bins where people can drop off clothing and small items from the household items. So do those need permits too?
Uh, through the chair, to address the chair's question, that's a good question, but typically those drop-off boxes would be in parking lots which aren't in this zone. They may be in like, excuse me, in a commercially zone situation, in an institutionally zone situation. situation, where we can simply deem them as accessory to the main use, given the overall zoning. This is, this particular zone is very limited in that it only allows for a parking lot and a parking structure and nothing beyond that. So there's not really any leeway here because of how tightly restrictive this particular zone is. If it was in like a C2 or institutional, some other zone, then maybe we wouldn't be having this conversation today, because we could deem it accessory to a principal use on the site.
Gotcha. So places like grocery stores and stuff where you see those drop-off bins, that's, that's what that falls into, their commercial zoning, et cetera?
Yeah, we can treat it as an accessory use under the parent zoning, which can, which allows for a much wider spectrum of uses versus the parking lots, parking zone.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Go ahead, your worship.
Just to follow up on that, Madam Chair. So they are in parking lots. So a parking lot connected to a Walmart or Atlantic Superstore, that's not a zone parking lot? It's zoned all commercial? The whole pop, the whole property? Just for clarification?
Through the chair, your worship, that, that's usually correct. So I'm just flipping slides here to actually illustrate. So directly across the street...
Yeah.
You have a commercial plaza with a parking lot area, quite a big parking lot proportionate to the building. And flipping over, all of that is Zone C2.
Okay.
So that portion that's parking, it doesn't show up as blue as parking zone. So that's often the case where you see the Walmarts of the world, that whole property, the parking portion isn't separately zoned as the parking zone, usually. That's usually reserved for sites like this, which are just parking or a parking garage, for instance.
So on page 40, 40, David, the non-conforming use does not apply here because, can you just clarify your, your statement there? I'm just looking at where it is. Operate it. It was, I thought it was page 40. Just one second. Because there's already a previous enactment? What did you say here?
Yeah, I'm seeing that there, your worship. So through the chair, because the use was established in 2021, the current bylaw was in effect as of 2018. So there's no way that we can assign a legal non-conforming status, because it doesn't predate 2018. And further to that, we would have to demonstrate that, under the pre-existing bylaw, that it would have otherwise been permitted in the zone that existed at that time. So just because of how recent this is, it's only three years old that it's been in place, we can't, we can't assign that status to it.
So David, the, the group, the community fridge group, they went to our previous manager, and he said, yeah, no problem. So they went out and had a structure built, put a infra, they put a organizing committee in place. They're doing a great service. And now we're telling them that they have to apply for a rezoning. But they don't own the land. How can, how can someone that doesn't own the land apply for a site-specific zoning if they?
It's the Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club that's applying for the...
They are applying, so they have to apply. Go ahead.
Just to clarify through the chair, the application that was filed was filed by the community group in question with the permission of the owners. So that is...
So it is through the community fridge? Yeah, no, no, I, so that's permissible? Like, I...
Yeah, we, through our application system, you can, you can assign a third party to apply on behalf of an owner. You can provide legal permission for that all the time.
Okay.
And we see that quite often, yeah.
And for a rezoning, David, it's a, like, an application fee, I think, is $2,000. And then when we go to the public meeting, there's another cost. This organization, the community fridge organization, they get their money from GoFund, the GoFund and Campaign. So now, I, and I'm, I'm sure that the Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club will help out, but again, this is a, a service that has been very, very needed. And we do have another, uh, uh, community fridge out in West Royalty that falls right onto a parking lot near our West Royalty Community Center. Now, maybe there hasn't been a complaint about that, but I just find that the, the amount of hours that the, the organization group puts into this, this outreach is, is, you know, when we go to the public meeting, my fear is we're gonna, we're gonna see that, that divide come out. And I think for a planning board, we have to look at, is this an appropriate use? And Conley Street is, as you know, there's the Conley Street or the Lions Club, Parkdale Sherwood Lions Club Bingo Hall that's on the other corner. It's surrounded by, as you know, to the north, commercial, commercial properties. So I think we're, this, this meeting will be interesting to, to attend, because it's been doing a great service. And I think as planning board members, we have to keep that in mind, that this is a service, not, they're not getting paid for it. They're probably getting favors from above or, you know, favors of, favorable tap in the back from, from the neighborhood or from their, from their colleagues. But I think we have to keep an open mind on, on this, on this public consultation, because there is a dire need out there. There, there are issues of mental health, there are issues of drug addiction, misuse of alcohol, unemployment, and most of all, you know, homeless, the, the, the unhoused. And, you know, the, they, they take in our marginalized, unwelcome, unwanted members of a community. So I, I hope all of us can look with open eyes and open arms of what the function this, this, this little group, it's, it's, and I've attended their meetings, Madam Chair, down at Jack Blanchard Hall. They're very committed, and they've outreach to a lot of organizations, volunteers are coming in to help out for, to help those that are in dire need. So I, I, and I did speak, Madam Chair, to David about this when I first saw it, I said, oh my heavens, we're not going down this road. So here we are.
Thank you for that, your worship. And Sen, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, as worship, you know, made some great points, and I just wanted to add something to that. You know, often, you know, we know that there is an issue of food security in our city, and, you know, and in order to address that, you know, community fridge is one of the ways to address, you know, food security. Can we not, like, and the city owns, you know, a few community centers, can we not allow, you know, like, like the West Royalty Community Center, there is a community fridge, can we not allow as of right there? And, or there could be a, you know, a direct relationship between the community organization and the city to allow in certain areas that the city owns to have those fridge in place? I mean, there are other ways of dealing with this without actually going for public consultation, but not, I'm not talking about this specific application, but I'm talking about that whole idea of community fridge and how the city can deal with the, with the organization and to put more in place, because I think there will be need for community fridge in the future.
I know that David had spoken about, you know, future, in the future, looking at, you know, developing a policy that would be reflective of that. Is, is there any more that you would want to add to that, David?
Well, through the chair, I would just say, addressing Sen's question, that there are zones where this could be interpreted as being openly permissive already, like I'm thinking institutional zones, perhaps some commercial zones, where you can just deem this accessory to the principal use and call it a day. There, it's because of the way the zoning's written for this particular site specifically that why we have this brought forward. We made that known to the community group. I know it comes across, just reflecting on the mayor's comments, it comes across as perhaps conceived as harsh or punitive, that we have to go to this length to consider this. But I think it's less harsh and punitive than the alternative, which would be bylaw enforcement and forcing this use to be removed from the site, which one could say has been established for a few years now, albeit not in conformity to the zoning bylaw. So this is, in a way, the lesser of two evils going through this process.
David, Mr. Madam Chair, David, don't take my, my comments as criticizing you. It's just how we got here. And I've watched this evolve over the last several years and the great work it's been doing for the community. So no malice to you or the department. It's just how this came about, and here we are tonight talking about it.
And I just want to say absolutely none taken at all. I'm just providing some critical comments here in terms of what the alternative would be. And we'd, we'd rather deal with it this way than through enforcement, to be quite honest.
And for, to, for the, for the owner of that piece of property that's now zoned parking, would it be a more laborious process for them to rezone, have the, an application submitted that would change the use of that, that would turn that community fridge into a permitted use? Or is that even more complicated?
Well, through the chair, address that question. That, that's what's being requested here, is a site-specific permission to essentially add a community fridge as an additional use for this particular property. A whole-scale rezoning of the site is just, I think, overkill, like, and this is a more rational approach, is just to seek a specific targeted exemption.
Yeah, I just wanted to put the question out there publicly because it was asked to me, so, from a resident, so that way, just to clear it up, so that, for, for, as his worship would say, for the public record. Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Lee.
This, it's a temporary site, right? We have our temporary food trucks. Does this fall anywhere in line with a temporary food truck that we sort of give a permit to on a temporary basis?
So you're referring to our street vendors bylaw?
Yes. Can it go through something like that?
That's a, that's a great question. It's one of those silo things. That falls under protective and emergency services. But David can probably speak to that, or Mike, or Brandon.
Through the chair, to answer that question, Lee, I, I would venture that we can't apply the food, food truck bylaw to this, because the community fridge is not, it, it's there all the time. It's essentially permanent use on the site. It's, it, it wouldn't, we couldn't consider it to be a food vendor of a seasonal nature. I don't think we could apply that bylaw. I think if we could, we would have, we would have tried to go that route. That was bandied about, but unfortunately, we can't apply that.
Maybe we'll put a set of wheels on her.
Thanks for that question, Lee. I believe, Rosemary, you have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to generally speak, I guess, I, I know this is not, we're not discussing the value of community fridges. But I think as a city, we need to be very aware of the welfare of the population. We know food insecurity is a huge problem. We know a lot of children are living with food insecurity. They're going to school hungry. School lunch programs are keeping these kids going. So I think as a city, we need to be, we need to foster this type of thing. We don't want to be coming at these community groups with a kind of a sledgehammer. Some of us have probably been helping with, you know, as a volunteer, to prepare meals for these community fridges. And I know that the meals go very rapidly. There's a big demand for them, especially amongst children. So let's see if we can figure out a way to deal with this, kind of with a holistic view of the health of the population, as opposed to just looking at rules, regulations, and bylaws. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Rosemary. David, would there ever be an opportunity to have a blanketed exemption for addressing food insecurities or unhoused, or, you know, our vulnerable population, where it becomes an exemption, so it's a blanketed exemption?
There's, I guess, a couple, short answer is yes. The long answer is how do you get there? And the long answer would be, do we wrap that into the zoning, the new zoning bylaw process that's before us to create a new bylaw for the, for the city? Or do we create a separate, parallel bylaw that piggybacks on the zoning bylaw? Kind of like the, the street vendors licensing bylaw, similar idea. So there's a couple of ways. The short answer is yes, you can get there. It's just a matter of how to approach it. I think the timing is opportune, just to try and wrap, roll that into the new zoning bylaw creation process that's about, we're just entering into very shortly, so.
Great. Thank you for that. Sen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can the city make an exception to the application fee in these cases?
Through the chairs, and staff don't have the power to do that, but that... I'm thinking that counsel may have some power to exercise an exemption, but I don't want to say absolutely yes. How about, I'll say maybe, and we'll, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you. No, as, 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 as worship mentioned earlier, you know, it's a volunteer group and, and the application fee is too high. That money can actually go towards the fridge, right? So maybe, maybe the council can, can consider, and maybe the planning board can recommend, you know, to the council to actually, you know, take a look into this matter and, and give an exemption to the application fee in some cases. Thank you.
Through the chair, just to extend on that, I would say that maybe the proper thing to do would be to encourage the group to make that request, and then counsel can consider that with respect to the fee bylaw, and we could sort out the legalities of that. But again, we, as staff, we can't do that at an operational level, but I, I think that'd be the proper approach, probably.
Yes, no, I agree with that. I, I think, I think that's what I meant, you know, to, to, to maybe have that conversation, you know, moving forward. And I'm not, you know, specifically talking about this application, but in the future too, you know.
And for the short term, that application even could be received through the mayor and council's office. So that's an option. But today, the only thing we have to decide today is to proceed to the next step, which is to accept staff's recommendation to move on to public, public consultation. We will see this file again after it goes to public consultation. We will see this again, so we can ensure, to make sure, we can, we can see where that is, whether or not the group has put in a request for an ask, and then we can bring that information forward at that time. So I think for now, if there's no other que, oh, go ahead, Chris. Okay. So that's moved by Chris and seconded by Bob, that we will accept staff's recommendation to, to ask counsel to move this on to public consultation. So the, the resolution is on the floor. Any questions to the resolution?
Question.
Question called. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Nope. Unanimously moves on to counsel. Thank you for that, and thank you for that healthy discussion. Okay, moving on to our next application. This is a application for a reconsideration. Thank you, your worship. You can move right in there with Counsel back. Hecking me out. Just joking. Okay, so next on the, on the agenda is an application for a reconsideration. And that is for 156 Prince Street, PID 342790. And that will be our manager of planning development, again. Over to 199 Grafton and 156 Prince, my correction. Go ahead.
Through, thank you, Chair Yankoff. Through the chair, as mentioned, this application is a reconsideration request under Section 3.15 of the Zonion Development Bylaw. And this is a request to reconsider the March 26, 2024 decision by counsel, which approved the official plan amendment on site-specific zoning exemption, applications for 199 Grafton Street, 156 Prince Street, PID number 342790, that would allow for the construction of an eight-story, 158-unit apartment building on the site, more commonly known as the Port House Development. As per Section 3.15.1 of the zoning bylaw, if a permit or other approval under this bylaw is granted, not granted, or granted subject to conditions, and the applicant or aggrieved person feels the decision is unjustified or unwarranted under the bylaw, the applicant or an aggrieved person may seek a reconsideration by counsel. I'll just note, for planning board's information, property is a through lot located in the 500 lot area, having frontage onto Prince Street, Grafton Street, and Hillsborough Street, as shown in the image on the screen, and is located within the downtown mixed-use neighborhood zone of the Zonion Development Bylaw. And as is probably already known by planning board, this property contains a surface parking lot, currently servicing the needs of the existing PoliClinic building. And as mentioned, counsel has recently approved OPA and site-specific zoning amendments to allow for construction of an eight-story, 158-unit apartment building on the subject property. So on, just relating to that, and why we're, we have this presentation before you tonight, on April 30, 2024, the city received a request for reconsideration with supporting rationale from a local resident that owns property abutting the subject property. Section 3.15.2 of the zoning bylaw requires that an aggrieved person or applicant wishing to launch a reconsideration request shall make their intention to do so known and the grounds or reasons for that request submitted to the city within 21 calendar days of the initial decision, which would have been March 26, 2024. Since the reconsideration request was unfortunately...
Uh, since the reconsideration request was unfortunately received past the 21-day period, as spoken to in the zoning bylaw, the request cannot be qualified as having any legal standing under section 3.15 of the zoning and development bylaw. And for that reason, um, planning staff are recommending that the planning heritage department, or sorry, are recommending, encouraging that the planning board recommend to council uh, to deny this reconsideration request concerning the March 26, 2024 approval of the site-specific zoning exemption and official plan amendment for 199 Grafton Street, 156 Prince Street, Street, PID three, four, two, seven, nine, zero, as a time constraint which is prescribed by section 3.15.2 of the zoning and development bylaw, requiring that an aggrieved person wishing to launch a reconsideration of an approval under the bylaw shall make their intention known within 21 calendar days from the date of the initial decision has not been met. And that is a summary of the request and our recommendation on the basis of the request and the wording of the zoning bylaw as it applies. And I'll turn, turn it back to the chair.
Thanks for that, David. I'm just a bit perplexed. If they didn't, if they didn't meet the criteria for an application, I mean, if somebody was applying to I RAC and they didn't meet the application deadline, why is it even here?
Um, through the chair, that's a very good question, and I, excuse me, I always have several different minds about this. So we're internally staff who I spoke to, and we, we figured that, um, this individual has gone out of their way to take the time to make this request, and at the very least, we should give it minimum consideration through the process, just, and just formally to recognize that we can't qualify this and have that confirmed through a resolution of council. Um, so that, that's basically an affirmation of us upholding, uh, the requirements of the zoning bylaw in this case. I know, I know, for instance, I'll just expand just sh- shortly on this, that in the case of I RAC, we have known I RAC to accept requests that are made past the deadline. I RAC still expends a limited amount of staff time to examine those requests and determine whether they have any legal standing or not. So that's essentially the exercise that we're doing right now, is to confirm, we're, we're providing a recommendation that on the basis of the wording of the bylaw, that this has no legal standing, and we're just seeking a resolution of council to confirm that absolutely, so. So that there's no question.
I appreciate the explanation. Um, I'll, 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 I'll quiet my judgment on the explanation, but so what's your timeline? Can somebody roll in in six months' time and do the same thing, and we're gonna, and we're gonna take staff's time and, and, and to come back? I mean, I, I respect that anyone would want, you know, to apply for a reconsideration, but I just, I just worry that we're really opening up a, a Pandora's box, if you will, of, of further reconsiderations when they don't even meet the first basic criteria, which is the timeline. With all due respect, David.
Through, through the chair to address that, um, I guess also dovetailing with some of what I said, why we're, we spent the time here, was that the wording of the bylaw is clear insofar as it says 21 calendar days from the initial decision, and there can be some confusion here whereby when we pass resolutions for zoning amendments, there's a first reading that happens at the first point of contact with council, and then there's a second reading. So we interpreted that the initial approval was at the point of that first reading and not the second reading. If one interpreted that it was the second reading, then you may, you, based on time, you could qualify this under the bylaw and then have to evaluate it further, but we, we just want to be clear that this had no legal standing, and we made, we made an interpretation, not an interpretation, we looked at the text of the bylaw, and we said the initial decision of council was March 26 and not into April when the second reading of that bylaw occurred.
Right.
And it's partially for that reason that we brought this forward as well.
Thank you very much for that, and, you know, I, I think a, a future, um, request would probably be a notice of motion for us to tighten up that, that portion of the zoning and development bylaw, or when we're doing the changes, to, to make things like that crystal clear so that we're not back in this situation again. But thank you very much.
And I'll just, just to expand on that, because one could look at it different ways, but we're taking that word initial to mean that first vote, um, and that's, and for that reason, we're disqualifying this request. Conceivably, another planner or staff person could look at it a little differently, and so we just want to be very firm about that. And again, with the new zoning bylaw, there's a lot of language that we're looking to tighten up to make things a bit more black and white in certain instances like, like this, so.
Thank you for that, um, clear, um, explanation. Go ahead, Sen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. David, maybe this, um, I know generally in these cases, there is a statute of limitations, and then perhaps, you know, we can clarify that in the bylaw, that, you know, you have specified time line, time period within which you have to re, apply for reconsideration, and there has to be specific grounds for reconsideration. Even after, after going through all, all the process, you can simply, there has to be, you know, has to be a technical error, there has to be something for which the staff would have to reconsider. Otherwise, it's no point for the city to go through the entire process, and then the same process is I think this is for future reference, maybe when we go through the review of the official plan and, and the bylaw, this can be taken into consideration.
Thank you, um, Sen. Are we allowed, are we allowed to ask? I mean, oh, okay, never mind. I take that all back. Councilor McCabe, it's your turn.
I might be jumping on a little bit. I couldn't quite hear everything Sen said, but I would like to get rid of this reconsideration clause altogether as, um, in our new planning. I think when we go through, we've talked about that in the past, that they do have a reconsideration option, which is I RAC. So when we've already had a thorough report presented to us by our staff, it goes through planning board, it goes to council, it gets approved, that's the decision, and there is that other option. So I'm hoping we can get rid of reconsideration altogether, and based on everything you've reported and the timeline alone, I'm gonna put the motion on the floor that we accept staff's recommendation to deny reconsideration on this application.
Thank you for that, and Councilor Beck has seconded that motion, so we now have a resolution on the floor. So we can now discuss the resolution that's on the floor. Any questions? Question called. All those in favor of denying this application or recommendation to council to deny it, all those in favor. Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Again, some healthy discussion. Okay, we're on to our final agenda item for today, and that is an amendment to an existing development concept plan and development agreement, 115 Murchison Lane, PID four, two, five, eight, nine, two. And I assume you are pinch-hitting for Laurel today, David?
That, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so over to, uh, David, our, um, manager of development planning. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair Yankoff. So the following application is a request to amend the current development concept plan and development agreement for the proposed development at 115 Murchison Lane. Uh, so again, request to amend the approved development concept plan for this parcel identified as PID number four, two, five, eight, nine, two. Uh, the current development concept plan was approved for the subject property by resolution of council on September 14th, uh, 2020. Subject property is, uh, shown on the slides before you and is within the CDA zone of the zoning and development bylaw. Some requirements around changes to development concept plans, uh, under section 41.2.7, before council approves or amends a development concept plan in a CDA zone, a public meeting shall be called in the same manner as if an amendment to this bylaw were being considered. Under section 41.2.8 of the zoning and development bylaw, changes to a development concept plan that do not change the approved intent of the use for lots such as minor additions to a building, a lot subdivision or consolidation will not be considered as a required amendment to a development concept plan and may be directly approved by the development officer, uh, which would be a member of, uh, planning staff. So just to give additional background to why this request is before you tonight, uh, this is an image illustrating the original concept plan approved in September of 2020. Um, and this was for a, um, a campus containing, uh, social service-related uses, including social housing, uh, mental health and addiction center, outdoor activity areas, and, and other supporting amenities and uses uh, for the, for this, uh, mental health campus. Uh, the revised plan is, um, proposing to take buildings A, B, C, D, and E, so this cluster in the northwest corner of the site, and to consolidate them into a single building shown here, and this is the reason for the, the amendment that's before, uh, board, the board this evening. And just to give, uh, some additional context, um, in November of 2023, Building G uh, was removed and replaced with a parking lot, uh, sho- shown here, uh, which is bookended by Buildings D, H, uh, and F to, to the northeast. And lastly, uh, these are, uh, 3D, uh, architectural renderings, concept renderings of what uh, the consolidated building, uh, will look like that's taking the place of, of the five buildings that were otherwise proposed, uh, as part of the, of the building cluster. And so that's the north view and the, uh, and the south view that would be looking towards the water, so. Uh, so again, the amendment proposes to remove Buildings A to E inclusive, consolidating all these buildings into one building. Uh, consolidating these buildings will remove a portion of the urban streetscape model that was previously proposed, and the, uh, new consolidated building would be set back further from Deacon Grove Lane with parking being visible from the street. Uh, and in conclusion, at this point, st- planning staff are recommending, uh, encouraging that the planning board recommend proceeding to public consultation for the request to amend the current development concept plan and development agreement for the property located at 115 Murchison Lane, PID number four, two, five, uh, eight, nine, two. And that is a summary of the request, and I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and you may all be wondering, didn't we just already send this to public consultation? We did, but because it is a, um, uh, uh, con- concept plan, anytime there's any changes, this is the process, so that's why we're here again today. So, any questions?
Just a quick question. David, the consolidations of A to E, did you say?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct.
Square footage. Do you have an idea, or do they have an idea? Uh, two hundred thousand?
I think it's gonna overall be a reduction in the total square footage, so what you would have among those five buildings collectively would have been more than what a single building would have.
Oh, good, perfect.
But it's not far off.
Okay, I move it.
Okay, moved by His Worship and seconded by Councilor McCabe. Any questions?
Question.
Okay, mercy. Okay, question called. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, should just make you all stay here a little longer. Talk about impatient. Okay, final item on the agenda, any new business? Okay, motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening. Get your dinner in the Parkdale room.